Right, we good to go then? All right, welcome everybody to the Thursday, November 4th, 2021, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. In accordance with AB 361 and Planning Commission, the Planning Commission will be held virtually until further notice. Please go to the website and see your options to join us. And with that, I would call the mean order. Ask you to please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the equal rights of all. We stand firm and united under God, in the name of our Lord and of His justice for all.
Thank you. Laura, can we get a Commissioner's present or roll call, please?
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder. Noah Levy. Mike Newman. Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Brian Mitchell. Melanie McAver.
Looks like we have a quorum, barely. I knew that Mike and Melanie wouldn't be here, but I didn't know Brian may join us late, so I didn't know about him, so. We can continue with the meeting. And that brings us to item number C. And that is discussion of remote meetings and possible adoption of a resolution number 21. And it didn't have a number there, so 21 dash authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Humboldt County Planning Commission for a period from November 4th, 2021 through December 2nd, 2021 pursuant to the route M. Brown. So, Director, you have.
This is something that the Commission has done before in terms of adopting a resolution indicating that you will be meeting remotely, this is something out of an assembly bill. And so in adopting this, the Commission is simply stating that you will continue to meet remotely between the dates of November 4th and December 2nd, at which time you reconsider that action.
All right, so we need a motion.
Yep.
And you have a resolution number you want to fill in there, or?
Resolution number will get filled in after it's.
Okay, okay. So you have a motion to.
Yes. I move to support that, that resolution. Specifically, the resolution authorizing remote teleconference meetings for the period from November 4th through December 2nd.
All right. Thank you, Noah. Breaking up, Noah. Alan was on here, he was the only one.
Apologize, everybody, the Chair is maybe back?
I'm back now. So you guys hear me? Hold on, folks.
There you go.
Better if I unmute myself. Can you hear me now? All right. Thank you, sorry about that, I don't know what, what happened, they had to reenact something. So Noah made a motion to continue working remote teleconference. Would somebody like to second that motion? I couldn't hear if there was anybody.
I thought I seconded it already, Chair.
Did, but I couldn't hear you, that was what the problem was. Thank you, Thomas. Any discussion about it? All right, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
I'm going to abstain.
All right. Thank you, so motion carries four, zero with one extension. All right, so Director, I see we have a lot of modifications to the agenda, so I'll let you take that one.
Yes, we do, and I apologize for this, last night at seven o'clock, we received a letter that takes issue with the county's use of wells for approving cannabis permits. And that letter is something that we want to respond to formally before asking the Commission to, to consider and take action to approve cannabis permits relying on well water. So what we're going to do tonight is ask you to continue all of those items to the November 18th meeting, and I'm going to go through and list those in just a moment. But what we will do is, is at the November 18th, that was originally scheduled to be the Commission discussion on cannabis permitting. Anyway, we will still conduct that discussion and bring back a formal response to the letter, which is part of the discussion anyway relative to water use and well use. And so that will be expanded larger discussion. What we'd hope to do is, is maybe set aside part of the meeting for the discussion, and then anticipating that there can be resolution, then the items that we're continuing tonight can be heard after that. So we'll try to schedule the meeting accordingly. That being said, what we're going to do, you have received a copy of this letter, it has been forwarded to you, and it was also posted on the Legistar website, so it is available for the public to review. That being said, the first item that we're going to want to ask you to continue tonight is on, is G5, the Macris Land Company Conditional Use Permit. And we're asking for this to be continued to a date uncertain. And there are going to be three different categories of continuances. There will be continued with date uncertain, continued to a date specific of November 18th, and then there will be one continued to December 2nd. So that was item G5, that was the Macris Land Company, continued to a date uncertain. The next item is item G8. This is Big River Farm, and this would be continued to the November 18th meeting. The next item is, well, G6 was already continued, is G10. Is the Humboldt Kings LLC, and we're asking for this to be continued to the November 18th meeting. Item G11, the Wood Saw Asans LLC in the Bloxburg area. This would be continued to the November 18th meeting. Item G13 is the Eagle Nest Farm LLC in the Whitethorn area. This would be continued to the meeting of 11-18. And then moving down under public hearings, the first one, H1 is already shown, it's continued to a date uncertain on the agenda. Then item H3 Terra Organicus in the Alderpoint area. This would be continued to the November 18th meeting. Item H4, the Georgie Stoyanov's conditional use permit in the Edersburg area. This is being continued to a date uncertain, and there's a separate supplemental on this. Then item H6, Myers and Aquarian LLC Conditional Use Permit in the New Harris area. This is continued to the meeting of November 18th. Next one is item H7, Lost Coast Collective Incorporated Conditional Use Permit. This is in the Edersburg area and is being continued to the November 18th meeting. The next item is item H8, H2 Equity LLC, and we're asking that this be continued to the December 2nd meeting. Well, I think maybe one of the things the Commission could do is make a motion, and I will offer the motion if it would help the Commission to continue certain items to a date uncertain, then continue items to the November 18th meeting, and then continue an item to the December 2nd meeting.
So which one you want to be first, uncertain?
Sure, we can do the ones continued to a date uncertain. Keep by the hand up.
Go ahead, Thomas.
Just on that last one, the number eight of the public hearings, it was confusing to me as it says it's in the Edersburg area, but it's with all the public comment that we read, it's clearly in the Salmon Creek area, I would believe.
Yeah, see, it is in Salmon Creek, that is a typo. Apologize for that.
Any other questions or anything before we move into making some motions? All right, so you want to make the motion, Director?
I, I would offer a motion that item G5, Macris, and item.
G6.
Gee, yeah, well, G6 is already shown as continued on the agenda. And H4, H1 is shown that way on the agenda, so items G5, Macris, and items H4, Stoyanov, be continued to a date uncertain would be the motion.
All right, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second, Laura, a roll call vote on that.
Thomas.
Yes.
Melanie McA, I'm sorry, Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimous. So now a second motion for the ones that are continued to November 18th.
Correct, and that would be item G8, Big River. That would be item G10, Humboldt Kings. That would be item G11, Wood Saw Asans. That would be item G13, Eagles Nest. That would be item H3 Terra Organicus. That would be item H6, Myers and Aquarian. And item H7, Lost Coast Collective would be continued to the meeting of November 18th.
I would make such a motion.
Thank you, Brian.
I will second again.
All right, thank you, Noah. Roll call, please.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
You there, Thomas?
I said yes.
Oh, we didn't hear you, sorry.
My apologies, I'll speak up next time.
No problem, thanks. Motion carries unanimous, and that brings us to the third one.
Which is to continue H2 Equity to the meeting of December 2nd.
We have a motion to do that.
I will move that we continue H2 Equity to the December 2nd meeting.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Brad. Roll call, please, Laura.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura, motion carries unanimous. All right, so looks like we got the House deep now away. Is there any other agenda modifications, Director, before we move on?
Not at this point, there are some supplementals, there's a supplemental for item F11, for G12, for G10, H3. And then there's a large amount of supplemental for item number H8, but that has been continued.
Thank you. So that brings us to item number E, public comments, and this is time when anybody can speak in the public on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Does it, anybody? Yes, it looks like, Roby Tenorio, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, so I, I do invite you all to read our letter and report from the hydrogeologist. We wrote the letter to your board in hopes that the information that the hydrogeologist discussed, Mr. Barry Hecht, in his report, it would help you and, and the planning department with the complicated process for determining groundwater extraction. We felt it was necessary to have the engineer's report from Platinum King you permitted a while back, and it relied on, on his report to determine that the, the well was not connected to the surface water. So Mr. Hecht was made that detailed report for us, and we wanted to share it with you, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is David Lindberg. Go ahead, David, star six on you, there you go.
Good evening, I just signed in because I understood that at the last meeting, there was some discussion and question about my qualifications to be looking at hydraulic connectivity of wells and groundwater, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have and explain it further if you need it.
Is there anybody who would like to ask any questions of David Lindberg? All right, I'll just disclose that I had a discussion with David, probably last week, for the first part of this week. He called me and brought up the same point that I had brought up, that whether he had the qualifications or not, and so I asked him to call in during the public comment in case there was anything that anybody else wanted to ask about it. I wasn't questioning his qualifications, and I just was bringing up that we had talked about that it had to be a hydrogeologist and, as opposed to just a geologist, and that's kind of where the discussion went from there, so this is opportunity if anybody has any questions for him, because he probably will be representing future projects that will come before us, so see his work. I'll see none, I thank you for calling in, David, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. And I will bring it back to the Commission. And the next item is the consent agenda, and we have three items, yes. We have review and approval of the October 7th, 2021 Action Summary. We have approval of the October 21st, 2021 Action Summary. And we have the McKinleyville CSD General Plan Performance Review Record, Record ID Plan Dash 2021 Dash 17386. And so those are the three items that are on the consent calendar. Is there any questions from Commission?
I would move approval of those three items on the consent calendar.
Hey, I'd like to open it up to public, just in case, for people who do that, just so.
Sure thing.
And I'll ask, is there any public comment on this? Usually it's just simple things, and there isn't. Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public comment, bring it back now. Knock yourself out, Noah.
Okay, and now I would move approval of those three items on the consent calendar.
Second.
A motion seconding for the discussion. Seeing none, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura, motion carries five, zero. All right, so that brings us to continue public hearings. And the first item that we have, just make sure that not on our list, but that continues. Yes, the Martin, Martin subdivision, parcel map subdivision in the Redway area. Take a staff report, please.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Let's see, can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, so this is the Martin Minor Subdivision. My name is Lealani Shine, presenting for land logistics. So Martin Minor Subdivision is located in the Redway area on the northeast side of Redwood Drive, approximately 150 feet northeast from the intersection of Redwood Drive and Ruskelane. This project is a minor subdivision of an approximately 19,460 square foot parcel into two parcels of 8,925 square feet and 10,535 square feet. The parcel is currently developed with two separate commercial buildings used by different commercial uses, and approximately 2,474 square foot two-story office building and associated parking lot will be located on proposed parcel one, and an approximately 985 square foot existing machine shop and associated parking area will be located on proposed parcel two. Both buildings currently receive water and sewer service from Redway Community Service District. Ruskelane crosses through the eastern portion of the property within an existing 25-foot easement and provides access to existing development on proposed parcel two. An exception pursuant to 325-9 of the county code will be needed to permit further subdivision without enlarging the size of the right of way to conform to the standard 50-foot wide requirement for a category four road. The existing building located on parcel one encroaches into an existing public utility easement. This will need to be resolved prior to the subdivision map being filed with the county recorder, and this project is considered exempt from CEQA. I'm happy to answer any other questions that the Commission has, but that concludes my presentation.
Does the Commission have any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will open this up for public comment, then. Any public that wishes to comment on this project? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the Commission. Somebody like to make the motion on it? Doesn't appear there's any questions or concerns. Somebody?
Sure, I will. I move that we find the project, find the project subject to a categorical exemption, make all of the required findings for approval of minor subdivision based on evidence in the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the Martin project subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second it.
Peggy, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Laura.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. Item number two. Home demolition and coastal development permit in the McKinleyville area. It's actually Trinidad, I think.
It's McKinleyville.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, a staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm Logan with Land Logistics. What I have today is application 2021 17105 for the demolition and redevelopment of a single-family residence in the McKinleyville area. The project site is located on the west side of Letts Road, approximately 170 feet south from the intersection of Letts Road and Airport Road, west of Highway 101 on the property known as 3480 Letts Road. The five-acre parcel is owned residential estates, which puts, which requires one to five acres per unit. The parcel is characterized as having relatively stable and moderately unstable soils, and the project will be filed under a CEQA exemption 15303A, new construction or conversion of small structures. The property is approximately five acres in size and is currently developed with a 3,360-square-foot residence, detached shed, and gazebo, which are all proposed to be removed. which are all proposed to be removed as part of the project. New development includes a 9,800 square foot single-family residence, 1,700 square foot garage, 17 or 728 square foot portico chay and 1,340 square foot pool and a 5,000 square foot recreation area to include basketball and tennis courts. Grading is expected to be minimal, less than 50 cubic yards and no trees will be removed. The proposed building height is under the 35-foot limit required in the airport safety review combining district. The geotechnical report for this project recommends increasing the setback to 185 or 181.5 feet from the edge of the stable bank. This has been included as a condition of approval for the project. I'll be available to answer any questions alongside of staff. Thank you for your time.
All right, is there any questions for Logan while we have him? All right, seeing none, thank you Logan, and I will open this up for public comment. Is there any public that wishes to speak on this project? Seeing none. Is there somebody there? Yeah, raise your hand if you want to speak, but I don't think there's anybody that wants. Now I'm going to close the public comment, nobody's putting their hands up. Bring this back to the commission. So what's the feeling of the commission on this one?
I'm prepared to make a motion if that's okay Chair.
Go ahead.
I want to find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant pursuant to sections 15303A of state CEQA guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the coastal development permit based on evidence in the staff report and approve the home project subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second it.
Peggy? Any further discussion?
Actually, I just wanted to comment, it's not about this project in particular, but since it's the first one that we're having a staff report. I just wanted to thank the staff for preparing the executive summary of each staff report as a separate item. I really appreciate that you've started to do that. I do think that will make it easier for folks to download and follow along with the proceedings from home. But no comments on this particular item other than that.
Yes, I was going to say something to Laura about that at some point too, so good job Laura, she's very happy. Thank you. So Laura, could we have a roll call vote please?
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes, motion carries unanimous. Right, that brings us to item number three. Brandon Bilanzia conditional use permit and special permit in the Alder Point area. So the staff report.
Good evening commissioners, my name is Megan Ryan, I'm presenting the Brandon Bilanzia conditional use permit. All right, just a second. At the October 21st, 2021 planning commission, or the planning commission heard the project and directed staff to return with a resolution for denial of this conditional use permit. Based on the discussion at the hearing on the 21st, the planning commission is denying the project based on the following. Lack of sufficient information to demonstrate proposed well will provide sufficient water for irrigation and lack of information to analyze potential environmental effects. Lack of sufficient information to demonstrate compliance or remedial actions that have occurred associated with the water resource protection plan. And lack of a will serve letter or other communication from PG&E to demonstrate on grid power will be brought to the parcel and be able to support the project. The staff report prepared for this evening includes a discussion of the denial determination and a resolution with the findings of denial for the project as directed. There is an alternative included at the end of the executive summary the planning commission may consider to continue the project to allow the applicant to submit additional information. This includes my presentation, planning staff is available for questions. The agent and the applicant are also in attendance at tonight's hearing. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Megan? She's right there. All right, see a nun, I'm going to open this up for public comment and if the applicant would like to speak at this time, I'll allow them to speak as well. So David Nicoletti, go ahead. Star six.
I am, I am the, I am the applicant's agent, David Nicoletti. And I have spoken with the applicant regarding these conditions of denial. And there's a couple of items that we'd like to respond to each of these conditions. One regarding the well, the applicant would like to demonstrate that the well is sufficient for irrigation purposes with no adverse environmental effects. But in order to do that, we have to drill a test well. In order to drill a test well, the location where the well is going to go, there, a road has to be constructed over to it. Now that road is part of the recommendations in the Water Resource Protection Plan. The design for that roadway and the grading for that roadway have been developed by myself and have been submitted into the building department for review at this point in time. Okay, and then in addition to that, that plays into the second item regarding requirements of the WRPP and having some of those addressed. I have developed also grading plans to replace culverts on the property as well as remove the existing pond that is required to be removed. And that has also been submitted into the building department for review. And it's my understanding that the building department will not issue a building permit for performing any of this full grading work until a cannabis work, I'm sorry, until a cannabis permit is granted. And then regarding item number three regarding power, this applicant is under ordinance 1.0. And under ordinance 1.0, it's our understanding that PG&E power is not a requirement and that the applicant can operate under generators. And but the applicant does want to obtain PG&E power and be put on the grid. But at the same token being, if there is any issues with that, the applicant would still like to be able to meet the conditions of the 1.0 ordinance and operate under generator use. So at the least, at the, at the least, the applicant would like to have some additional, if the, if the permit is denied, the applicant would like to have additional time to work with the building department, with the planning department to come to resolution and constructing some of the facilities that we would need to construct in order to meet these conditions set forth by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Director, would you like to address any of those?
No, we are always open to working with an applicant to address issues. And it really is the pleasure of the commission at this point. What we've tried to bring back is the resolution reflecting the discussion of the commission at the last meeting. If the commission would like to allow the applicant more time to explore solutions to address the commission's concerns, we would be happy to work with them.
I think that, I think that wouldn't this one fall under the same category as all the other ones that had wells proposed? Or we're going to rely on wells that were postponed? It sounds like there's other issues also, but you know, I don't, I'm not adverse to giving them additional time. They've been given sufficient time if they've gotten to this point. And has there been a failure on their part to respond to requests from the county? No?
No, I would not say that that's the case. I think that what happened last time is the commission didn't feel comfortable approving this. I think there was some history to the site and the commission chose to adopt the intention of intent to deny. And so what we're doing tonight is bringing back that resolution.
I understand. I just was curious if, if you felt that if they were given additional time that they might be able to overcome some of these issues? Or should we just go straight to denial, Meg?
In my opinion, I think providing the additional time would be beneficial for the applicant and that they would be able to overcome the hurdles. It would allow them time to determine if they're going to use the well. Historically, they had used a point of diversion under 2.1, oh, two, under 1.0, excuse me, they could continue to use that. Alternatively, they may choose to develop brainwire catchment. So it'd give them more time to look at a water, putting together a more complete water management plan, energy plan and be more clear about the items that have been completed in the WRPP. Looking through it specifically, there are items that unrelated to necessary permitting that have occurred at the site that are recommendations, but some of the improvements in the WRPP are tied to getting this cannabis permit first before subsequent permits that the county can be issued. And they've also submitted the notification to the Department of Fish and Game for the recommendations in the WRPP.
Thomas, I see you have your hand up, but we're in public comment right now and then I'll come back after we get through, there's one other hand up. So I'm going to, I'm going to go to that seven ones early.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry. I just wanted to make a comment that whatever if you decide to give these people more time, that it should come back to the planning commission when it's more complete and not just go through the planning department. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, see a nun, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. And Thomas had his hand up, so go ahead Thomas.
So the reason it's back here is I failed, I honestly felt at the last meeting we could approve this project and I voted no on bringing it back later because I felt that it could have been approved last meeting. My feeling is if the overall intent of the CMM L U O is to improve the environment, giving the applicant time to work with the county to possibly fix some of these things in WRPP and maybe do a test well or what other environmental improvements are needed would be the best thing overall for the environment, which was the intent, I believe, of the original ordinance. So I'd be in support of the alternative in our options.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Thomas, go ahead.
I'm going to work really hard to keep my personal things out of this, but my confusion with this is if this project is not approved, how grading permits and stuff like that would be able to be approved for a test well? So I'm just a little confused because in my personal experience, acquiring permits is a little challenging.
Do you want to take that?
So the applicant's agent, Mr. Nicoletti is correct, when there is an application for cannabis on the site, we do not issue any construction related permits until the cannabis permit has been approved. If there's no cannabis permit on the site, then it's treated as a piece of property and entitlements or construction related permits are granted like they would be for any other development subject to the zoning and any requirements that exist therein.
Go ahead Peggy.
So I don't understand why that happens. I mean, if you want to put a well on your property for cannabis or for any purpose, you should be able to get a permit to do that. So why would it be prohibited? Because is it an ordinance or is there, is it part of the law that says you can't do that or is it just practice? What's, what's preventing a person from putting a well or, you know, doing exploratory well on their property? You know, if they're not, if it doesn't turn out that they can use for cannabis, they can possibly use it for other purposes. But I don't understand that at all.
So that's a really great question. And one of the things that has kind of evolved through this process is that it used to be that well permits were treated completely independently of cannabis permits. But part of the litigation against the county is the accusation that we have split permits up. And in CEQA parlance, that's called piecemeal. And so Department of Environmental Health no longer will issue a well permit if there's a cannabis permit on it in order to not get into a CEQA violation. We're still working through that litigation. We don't believe that the county has done anything incorrectly there. But we are being very conservative.
So there is an alternative and some of the other permittees have come in with alternatives, which is water catchment, solar, you know, going to solar within a reasonable period of time. Because, you know, everyone says they want to go on to PG&E, but I'm telling you, it costs a lot of money and I don't know the particulars about how close it is to this parcel, but just saying you want to do it and doing it are two different things. So other people have overcome those obstacles by coming in with alternatives. So those alternatives are available to this, this applicant also. They don't have to go just build a road and put in a well. They can do water catchment, they can propose to do solar and get permitted.
Noah, did you want to say something? You came up big on the screen, I don't know why.
Oh, sorry, because I'm unmuted, but I didn't mean to be. That's my mistake.
All right. I'm not sure, what, what's the, the preference of the commission? Do we want to make a motion to deny it? Or do we want to make a motion to evade uncertain to give them time to come up with a new plan or alternatives?
So if it's denied, does that mean it never gets to come back or they have to start all over? What's the consequences?
Megan, is this in a impacted watershed?
Uh, no, it is not in a impacted watershed. So I think the applicant, should the commission deny the project, the applicant would have the option to appeal to the Board of Supervisors. Also, it is zone FR and is not an impacted watershed. They would have the ability to reapply under 2.0 as an alternative to an appeal.
Well, I think we should give them more time.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to chime in and say, although I missed the discussion last time, but I'm, I'm inclined to see this as an application that could be rectified and especially given what Ms. Ryan said that she thought more time could allow this application to come into conformance, I would, I would support doing that.
I'm going to go ahead and make that a motion.
Do, hold on a second.
More time.
Okay, but do we want to be specific, the things that they have to bring back or just give them more time to? Or just give them more time to bring back whatever? I mean, there were some specific things that Mr. Nicoletti asked for. So should we be specific in, in our motion? Or just be general and let them bring it back? Director might want to chime in on that.
In the alternatives on, which is listed on page five of the staff report, does state specific items that were related to the well, water management, compliance with the WRPP and essentially an energy management plan. And additional items could be added as well.
So I was, Brian, go ahead and make your motion. I just wanted, if you wanted to add anything to matter or, you know, if that covers it good enough for you, that's all I was, the point I was trying to make.
I didn't intend to add anything specific. I think that the applicant can see the items listed in the staff's denial recommendation that would have led us down the path to denial. And by using that, they can determine what, what we think we need to get there to approve it.
Okay, go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I move to continue this project to a date uncertain to allow the applicant to provide the additional items as listed in the alternative in the staff report.
I would second that motion.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All right, Laura, a roll call vote then.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. All right. That brings us to item number four, which is Christina Giannelli Conditional Use Permit in the Barberville area.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you all see my PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Great. My name is Abby Strickland. I'm the assigned planner for the Christina Giannelli Project, application number 12087. The project is located in the Alder Point area. And the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit for 31,500 square feet of cultivation. The, the application has a history of violations. The first violation was issued to the applicant in 2018. They were found to be cultivating without the required county interim permit or state license. We provided them the opportunity to obtain an interim permit and state license or remove the cultivation. The applicant received the interim permit and a state license, and we allowed the continued cultivation of 13,600 square feet. In April of 2020, we issued a second violation to the applicant. We found that in the 2019 cultivation season, they had expanded their cultivation 7,960 square feet beyond what was authorized under the interim permit. We required the applicant to pay a penalty fee of $15,920. And the applicant was notified that repeated unauthorized cultivation would lead to denial of the permit application. In July of 2020, we issued a third violation for the unauthorized cultivation of 21,123 square feet. And on August 3, 2020, the applicant came into the planning department and was unwilling to remove the unauthorized cultivation. At that time, the applicant still had not paid excise taxes that were due for 2018 and 2019. And that is why their interim permit had not been extended. The fourth violation occurred or was issued in September of 2021. The applicant again cultivated 22,080 square feet. And we notified the applicant, the applicant that the project would be brought forward for denial before the planning commission on October 21st. The project was continued from the last hearing because we just didn't get to it. Multiple attempts have been made to reach the applicant and receive a response. They do have the opportunity to withdraw an application before it gets to the point of denial before the commission, but they have not responded to our attempts to contact them. So staff are recommending that the commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Secret Guidelines, Sections 15270, and that the commission make the required finding that the project site is in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and deny the Christina Giannelli project. And that concludes my presentation. So I am available if you have questions.
Any questions from staff? All right. Thomas, go ahead.
Was this site ever visited by law enforcement, cultivating multiple seasons without county or state licenses?
Uh, we did issue a notice of, a notice to abate nuisance, but we did not receive a response from, or we did receive a response from the applicant. She had asked what was necessary to resolve the violation. Our code enforcement unit did respond to her and let her know what needed to happen. But she did not remove the cultivation and continued to cultivate, so.
Abby, if I could, has the sheriff ever visited the site?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. That, that was my question. From what I'm hearing is two seasons without county or state permit, basically allowed to cultivate. Okay.
I'm gonna ask a question. How come the sheriff hasn't been sent out there? How come something hasn't more happened? This isn't, this has been going on for a long time. It just seems like.
I, I, I.
Probably don't want it, so.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Anybody else have any questions before we open it up? All right. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Seven one zero eight, go ahead.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry. Yeah, I feel like if people have had this many violations and just keep on growing and nothing happens, why, why weren't they abated? Or the sheriff's office contacted, something like that? So, um, yeah, I, I support the proposal to deny this. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? See, and then I'm gonna close the public comment, bring this back to the planning commission. What are your thoughts? Would you like to go with this one?
I don't see any, or I haven't heard any mitigating factors for why we wouldn't deny this.
Um, I'll make a motion then. I find, move that we find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Secret Guidelines, Section 15270. Make the finding that the project site is in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and deny the Christina Giannelli project.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Noah, and then thank Peggy. I think somebody else was trying to, but I'm not sure. All right, any further discussion? Laura, roll call vote please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. And at seven o'clock, we usually take a quick break about this time. So let's, before we move on to the next item, let's take the five minutes and then we'll come back and continue. We'll see you in five. Three one, and the director has to have a second.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, here. I want to introduce, we've got a new deputy county council working with us, representing the Planning and Building Department, also the Planning Commission. And so I want you to be able to meet her. Her name is Destiny Andrews. And Destiny, I don't want to put you too much on the spot, but maybe you could just meet yourself and sing your alma mater's fight song or?
I don't know why my camera isn't seemingly trying to work right now. And I'm not super tech savvy to address that, unfortunately. But thank you, Director Ford. Yeah, my Go Blue, thank you for that reference. I am coming from the University of Michigan. My L L M is Environmental Law. I joined about a month ago and I will be with you guys on the planning commission. So I am online and here. If you guys have any issues or questions, feel free to direct them towards me.
Welcome. Thank you. So that brings us to Mountain Creek Farms and Research Facility Conditional Use Permit in the Bloxburg area. Take a staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
My name is Cameron Perchio, and I am presenting the Mountain Creek Farms and Research Facility Conditional Use Permit. The project is a conditional use permit for 22,340 square feet of existing cannabis cultivation, consisting of 5,140 square feet of mixed light cultivation grown in three greenhouses, 12,800 square feet of outdoor cultivation in 10 greenhouses, grown utilizing light deprivation techniques, and 4,400 square feet of full sun outdoor cultivation. No ancillary propagation occurs onsite. Drying, bucking, and harvest storage occur onsite. Processing occurs offsite. Up to three people present onsite during peak operations. And power is sourced from solar with generator backup. Irrigation water will be sourced from a 1.2 million gallon on-stream pond that was developed prior to 2005. There's the ability for the pond to capture 880,000 gallons of rainwater in an average year, calculated over the last 10 years of rainfall. Total available water storage is 1,210,500 gallons in the pond and several hard-sided tanks. Annual water use is estimated at 221,559 gallons, approximately 9.9 gallons per square foot. The rainwater catchment pond will provide sufficient water capture and storage to meet the expected annual demand. The nearest Northern Spotted Owl Activity Center is located 1.27 miles from the project location. Noise and light attenuation measures are applied to the project. Approximately 0.37 acres of timber was cleared to develop the project site. Conditions of approval require the applicant to adhere to and implement recommendations contained in the Timber Conversion Evaluation Report located in Attachment Three of the staff report. Access to the site is via a driveway off Homestead Road, a private road, via Alder Point Road. A road evaluation report indicates that the project can accommodate the traffic generated for the project. And finally, this slide is showing the site plan for the subject parcel. The greenhouses are shown in green, and the pond with the yellow star is the pond used for irrigation. Planning staff recommends that the planning commission finds the commission as considered the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration. Make all the required findings for the conditional use permit, and based on the evidence in the staff report and approve the Mountain Creek Farms and Research Facility Project subject to recommended conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Does anybody have any questions for them? Go ahead, Thomas.
One of those slides that was using the county GIS, I'm just under the impression that the GIS is off a little bit because it showed, looked like the greenhouses were partially on another piece of property. But I've seen other spots where the GIS is off, so just wanted to clarify.
Yes, that is correct.
All right, any other questions before I open this up to public? See, and then I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Any public that wishes to speak? Okay, now I see two. Oh, there we go. Seven one zero eight, go ahead.
Yeah, just one question. How many workers will be traveling back and forth to this facility? Thank you.
Yeah? Any other public that wishes to speak? All right, staff? Anybody want to comment on the number of workers or?
Cameron, you have a number?
I'm, I'm not, I don't have a number for the number of employees that will be traveling. I know there will be a maximum of three people onsite during peak operations.
Okay. And I keep seeing a name pop up, but then it goes away. So I don't know. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Stevenson, Ellen, go ahead. Star Sixta, unmute.
Unmute. Okay, I'm just, there's an awful lot of confusion about locations, all the, so far this evening. In this case, I thought it said it was near Edersburg, and all of a sudden it was on the Alder Point Road. I would just encourage this to be straightened out so people have some sense of locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who should speak on this one? See, and then I'm gonna close the public comment, and I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. What are the thoughts?
I'm pretty comfortable with this one. I would go ahead and make a motion if no other commissioners have further concerns.
I like this one too. I support your motion.
Okay, thanks. Well, then I will move that we adopt the resolution to find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance pursuant to fifteen, Section 15, one, Section 15, 164 of the State Secret Guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and approve the Mountain Creek Farms and Research Facility Project as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Second.
All right, I think that was Brian. So Noah's the motion, Brian's second. Any further discussion? See, and none. Laura, a roll call vote, please.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. That brings us to, I believe, item number nine. The Pacui LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Alder Point area. Report, please.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Max Okin. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
All right. So before you tonight, I am presenting the Pacui LLC Conditional Use Permit. The proposed project is a conditional use permit for the continued cultivation of 16,600 square feet of light deprivation cannabis cultivation within 13 hoop houses. 1,500 square feet of ancillary propagation will be utilized onsite to support. 1,500 square feet of ancillary propagation will be utilized onsite to support the cultivation. Drying, bucking, and harvest storage will occur onsite while processing is proposed offsite. Up to six people will be onsite during peak operations, and power for the project is sourced from a 25 kilowatt generator. Irrigation water will be sourced from two ponds, one with a 400,000 and one with a 100,000 gallon, respectively, capacity. There is the ability for the ponds to capture a total of 552,116 gallons of rainwater per year, based on the average rainfall for the area over the last 10 years. Total available water storage onsite is 519,500 gallons in the ponds and several hard-sided water tanks onsite. The project opponent has estimated 392,000 gallons of water will be utilized. And through the analysis provided in the executive summary, the rainwater catchment ponds will provide sufficient water cap storage to meet the expected annual demand. The nearest NSO Activity Center is 1.1 miles from the project location, and noise and light attenuation measures are applied to the project. This is where the project is located. Access off of a bliss lane road from Jewett Road. And road evaluation report provided by the applicant does indicate that the roadway can accommodate the traffic generated for the project. The project is conditioned to have the applicant join or create a road maintenance provision to ensure proper maintenance is maintained for this roadway. Lastly, I have a slide showing the site plan for the subject parcel. The greenhouses, as described, are shown in green, and the two nursery greenhouses in yellow. And that concludes my presentation. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Is there any questions for staff? The commission? Doesn't appear, so I will now open up the public comment. Maybe, I don't know if it makes a difference. Can you reduce your stream? That, for some reason, won't let me open up. There we go. Now it finally did it. Is there any public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. And I see Peggy has her hand up.
Did you indicate in the energy plan that they were using any solar or is just strictly a generator?
Great question. It is strictly just a generator, and it's only to support the nursery operations for two cycles of light deprivation cultivation and some drying facilities, mechanical devices for the drying facility. So not used throughout the year, just seasonally. No solar proposed.
Any other?
In past projects, we didn't.
Any other questions or thoughts?
So my thoughts, Mr. Chairman, are inconsistent with what Peggy was asking, is why have other projects come before us with, you know, the recommended phase out of generators? Did we ask the applicants about, you know, the four or five-year phase out that we've applied to others? And were they willing to have such a condition put on the project?
Commissioner Mitchell, to respond, typically in preparation for the hearing, we do ask if the applicant has any plans to use any renewable energy sources. However, with the 1.0 ordinance, it's not a requirement, but we do anticipate that the commission and the public will comment on the sole use of generators. In this case, we don't, we did not get that feedback from the applicant prior to the hearing.
Meaning they said they wouldn't do it, or we simply didn't ask, or they didn't respond to our request?
Max can confirm, but I believe that we did not hear a response from them. So not that they didn't say, no, they're not going to do it, but we were able to get a response from them to confirm that they would be willing to do it.
Okay.
Thomas, you have your hand up?
Just a stupid question regarding generators. I know what the answer is, but I'm going to throw it out there. As far as I know, there has not been a public process to amend the CMM L U O. So as far as I know, the commission's job is to not set policy, just to follow ordinances. So I just want to double check that there hasn't been a public process to curtail generator use that I'm unaware of.
There, that I know, and that's why we're having the discussion on the 18th, that we may make some recommendations to the supervisors to maybe make some changes in the ordinance. So bring that one up next meeting, Thomas.
Through the chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
Max, could you explain if you asked the applicant directly if they were willing to stop using the generator at some point and consider another energy source? Was that specifically discussed with them? And did they give no answer, didn't respond, or said no?
I am currently looking at what I sent out to the applicant to ensure. I did not specifically request confirmation if the applicant was seeking to go to a renewable source of energy in my back and forth with them.
Okay. And Peggy, you have your hand up, and then we may have the applicant.
I, you know, fully understand that the 100% conversion away from a generator in some of these areas is probably impossible. A renewable energy plan within five years is not, I think, you know, too much to ask. That you supplement your energy with renewable sources. It could be hydro, it could be solar, whatever is appropriate for your site, could be wind. But I think that the idea was that, you know, at least this is what I've heard over and over again, is that, you know, you were trying to move generators out of areas that could be fire prone. And I think that it's just good practices, whether it's mandatory or not, that we ask and see what they say.
I'm going to take a chance and go back to the attendees, and there's 4716. If you are the applicant, please go ahead and speak now. Star Six. Okay, well, it must not be the applicant then, so. All right, so Thomas, go ahead.
Just want to remind the commission that this is an outdoor cultivation. So with that new amendment, the max amount of lighting they could use is six watts per square foot. The energy consumption would be fairly minimal. I... And it's not in their plans, so I don't, I mean, they probably can't even put any lighting in there, even though they're using light deprivation. So very minimal power use is what I'm trying to get at.
If I could clarify. Commissioner Mulder did correctly cite the state standard. The county standard is no supplemental light for outdoor. So there will be no power need for the grow.
What about for the nursery?
There is a power need, as was explained by staff, for the nursery and for drying.
And if it's a minimal use, then it's minimal renewable, so it's not really too much to ask.
Well, we've definitely added conditions before. If it's the preference of the commission, you can make a motion that has that added condition in it that, you know, within a certain amount of time, they get on renewable or tied into P G M E or whatever you want to do. Noah, I see you got your hand up. Is yours back up, or is it?
Thomas was up before mine, so maybe you-
Go ahead, Noah. You're there now, and then-
Well, okay, I was just, I was just trying to recall, but I think what we've done in the past is to require the phase out of generators to some renewable and leave it open by the end of 2025. So that's pretty generous. And as Peggy says, while I agree that in this case, the intended, the necessary use of the generator is fairly minimal relative to many projects, the power use, I believe, is fairly minimal. But that also means that the required, you know, infrastructure for renewable would be fairly minimal relatively as well. So I guess I'm comfortable making that part of our motion, but I'd like to hear what else Thomas has to say and other Commissioners first.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So I apologize if I misspoke. I thought we made an amendment where we allowed 60-watt bulbs, six watts per square foot, under outdoor in county, but maybe I misinterpreted that. So maybe I misspoke. Irrelevant of that. I was going to throw out a motion and try to prove it as is and just see where it went. So. I adopt the resolution, find the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance, CMM L U O, pursuant to section 15164 of State Sequel Guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and approve the Pacquie or Pacquie LLC project as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions in the staff report.
All right, Nick, Thomas, have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Hey, thank you, Noah. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Laura, roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Brian Mitchell?
No.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
So motion carries through the two. It's a topic to bring up at next meeting. All right, so that brings us on to item number... Item number 12, Redwood Valley Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Titlow Hill area.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Byron Turner. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Hey, I'm presenting the Ribbit Valley Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit. The proposed project, the applicant is requesting to, or the commission approve and to approve an existing 14,180 square foot outdoor cultivation, including 660 square feet of ancillary propagation. Drying and harvest, drying and harvest storage is onsite in a 1,000 square foot structure. Power is derived from solar with two generators used for emergency and supplemental uses. The special permit is required for the use and maintenance of the point of diversion within the streamside management area. As you can see by this map, the property is accessed by Lower Sabretooth Road from Highway 299. The road evaluation report concluded that the roadway can accommodate the cumulative increased traffic from this project and the known cannabis projects on Lower Sabretooth Road. The project is conditioned to require that the applicant adhere to the recommendations of the road evaluation report and to form or join a road maintenance association. The annual water usage for this project is 217, 900 gallons, provided by a water diversion on a Class II tributary stream to Windy Creek and a 390,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond. The pond was developed in 2016. The point of diversion is now used as backup only. The appropriate water rights for the diversion are secure, and the special permit would allow continued use of the approved diversion, which is subject to multiple requirements. We have the plot plan here showing the cultivation area and the pond. We did receive public comments on this project. As a result, staff revised the resolution and clarified the findings and also revised some of the conditions, which is in the supplemental that you've been provided. At this point, staff has recommends approval of the conditional use permit and special permit, subject to the revised findings and conditions of approval. I'm available for any questions.
All right, any questions for staff? Can you minimize your speed? There you go. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, and then I'm going to open this up to public comments. 7108, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say a little something about generators. Back when the first ordinance was formed, there was big opposition to generators in the hills. And so the ordinance said no indoor growth with the generator. But now it's turned out that put it in a hoop house, and you can use the generator. So I'm really hoping that the commission will keep encouraging going to renewable, because I don't think it was the intent of the ordinance to have all these generators in the hills. So that's my comment in this one. I'm glad to see it has solar, the two generators. I'm not sure how much they'll be using them. And it's like, well, if you're not using them for growing, but you can use a generator a lot for the drying and curing and the ancillary nurturing. Sometimes those are going on for months and months, not just a couple weeks here and there. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other public that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
I'd just like to make a brief statement to Ms. Blackberry. I appreciate her comments, but the difference in indoor, indoors a lot more along the lines of 50 watts per square foot, whereas mixed light is limited by state law at 25 watts per square foot. So just something to keep in perspective.
Any other thoughts? I'm going to raise my hand. I have concerns on this one. I think the project, for the most part, is good. I have, uh, concerns with the road. It's 3.3 miles long. There's at least one creek crossing, that bridge doesn't look like it could take a whole lot of weight. I just, I can't buy into these commercial projects being put out in the middle of the hills and allowed to have substandard conditions. If we haven't had it happen yet that I know of, I'm sure it has, it just hasn't been reported, but, you know, we haven't had a fuel truck or a, you know, a semi that's hauling soil in or something, you know, fall into one of these gulches or into one of these creeks and the watersheds. And this, you know, goes right down into Redwood Creek. So I have a real concern with the road. These roads shouldn't be out there. It's, you know, I, I know I'm starting to sound like a broken record on the road issue, but, uh, this is a commercial project and that is not a commercial rated road, so I have a problem with that. Any other thoughts on this project?
Can the staff respond to that?
Would staff like to respond to that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I think it's important to, to note that, um, in fact, I was looking for a, a condition. There's a couple of things I want to say here is, is this is in the Titlow Hill area. One of the things we're working on is legalizing the parcels out there. And part of that effort is to bring these roads up to, um, acceptable, uh, levels. And so I was just looking through the conditions. Did we, um, include a condition that, uh, they participate in the improvement of the road and join the road maintenance association, um, in order to, uh, bring this road up to acceptable standards?
Yes, it is provided as a condition of approval.
Uh, number 14.
Thank you. So I guess my short answer on this is, is that, uh, we are looking for them to bring this road up to standards along with others. The other people who have property along this road should also be responsible for that. But, uh, given that this is one of the first ones to come through, we're requiring them to initiate that discussion and initiate that work.
Thomas, I saw you had your hand up and then Peggy.
So thank you for bringing up the roads. I do share your concerns about the roads. Definitely. I'm just gonna leave it, I agree with you on that. The only other question I had for staff was condition 11. It was speaking of only having enough water for the project. Factoring in evaporation, being as it's located so far out there, wouldn't staff want to have extra water in that pond in the event that there's a fire in that location? It just, it was kind of a confusing condition.
So I would anticipate, Mr. Turner or Ms. Ryan, help me to understand this. Was this condition based upon a, uh, recommendation to address bullfrogs?
That, uh, is what I'm looking up right now. Typically, we would see that coming from the Department of Fish and Game.
Right. So as a general rule, Commissioner Mulder, we do agree that it would be better to have more water, extra water, particularly for firefighting purposes. Uh, there are circumstances in which that's better, uh, in some locations to allow the ponds to dry out. Uh, what that does is that, uh, that takes away bullfrog habitat and minimizes the, the growth of bullfrogs.
I totally, once you brought up bullfrogs, I totally forgot about the sensitive watershed area, why that would probably be a concern.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Peggy, you had your hand up.
Yeah, reading number 14, conditions from the road, um, group that you have to form. I was a part of one of those associations and, you know, we had meetings. You had to put in $150 a year, but that's not, there's not much meat there. So is there a standard or, you know, something you have to do other than prove that you had a meeting? And take minutes, because that's not gonna get your road fixed up in any, in any near future.
There are also conditions of, uh, conditions that requires the, um, upgrade of the road that are found in the road evaluation report. It's not just the maintenance agreement.
Mr. Turner, what condition is, is that? Help, help us find that.
The, the condition links to, it states that the recommendations in the road evaluation report shall be followed.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on this one? Did anybody like to make a motion in this project?
Uh, Chair, I'll make a motion.
No?
I move that we, uh, adopt the resolution to find the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the CMM L U O pursuant to section 15164 of the state sequel guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and approve the Redwood Valley Farms LLC project as recommended by staff, subject to the required, uh, recommended conditions.
Noah, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Peggy. Any further discussion? All right, so then Laura, that's for roll call vote.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
No.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you, Laura. All right, that brings us to item number 14. Protilla LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Edersburg area. This is staff report, please.
Thank you, Commission. My name is Jordan Mayer with ICF, the planner, contract planner assigned to this project. Protilla LLC is located in the Edersburg Whitethorn area. It is an application for 18,200 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation. And that is comprised of 14,560 square feet light deprivation greenhouse and then a single 3,600 mixed light greenhouse. The pertinent nursery has been limited as a condition of approval to 10%. Water usage is 441,000 gallons per year, which comes out to about 15.7 gallons per square foot. There is a rainwater catchment pond that was recently installed and it is 730,000 gallons in size. And the catchment has been calculated to be 42,000 square feet. And this pond was constructed to allow forbearance from summertime diversions. This project does not have a well, that's why it's, remains on the hearing tonight. Um, and it, but it does have a point of diversion, uh, and it has a water right certificate and a lake and stream bed alteration agreement. So the diversion is, there's a forbearance agreement, they cannot use it during the summer months, and they rely on the rainwater during that period. And, uh, it's, electricity is sourced entirely from Pacific Gas and Electric Company through their solar choice program, and then they have a backup emergency generator. On-site development consists of replacing a 3,500 square foot processing bill, building and installing a thousand ga- gallon propane tank and generator for more environmentally friendly backup power in the, you know, events of PG&E power outages. Here you can see the general location near the Matole Canyon on the left, and you can see the site plan on the right. And I want to point out to the commission that the site plan included in the staff report is actually a, a grading and erosion plan, um, which I've, you can see in the small thumbnail inset on the bottom right. That's what's included in the staff report, but that was not actually the full site plan that contains like setbacks and labeled, um, canopies, et cetera. And I'm, I'm not sure if you can make it out, but you can see that there's a, all the greenhouses, the four light depth and one mixed light are all concentrated directly adjacent to one another in a single central location on the parcel. The project has been conditioned, uh, various conditions, but the main one, the overwhelming conditions set on this project relate to all the recommendations in the Water Resources Protection Plan. So i- in, in these multiple road points, you know, more than a dozen are related to, you know, repairing stream crossings, installing ditch relief culverts, check dams, et cetera, to reduce erosion from the road network on the parcel. So the relatively, you know, straightforward project, PG&E, they've got a point of diversion, but they have a very large pond that enables full forbearance. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I just wanted to ask about the water usage. Do we have a, a, a standard in terms of gallons per square foot per year, like on the low end or high end? Like, uh, when we're judging projects, what, within what range and how much flexibility do the applicants have to, um, use those numbers based on estimates?
I'll jump into that. Uh, we don't have a prescribed number. The number that we see most often centers around about 10 gallons per square foot. Um, it can range, um, to a lower number, uh, to a higher number, depending on location, depending on type of cultivation, depending on whether it's in ground or not, depending on whether it's in a greenhouse or not, depending on the, uh, type of plant that's being grown. So there's, there's not a rock solid number.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we can open this one up to public comment then. Or any public that wishes to speak on this project? Go ahead, Bonnie.
Hi, um, yeah, I don't know if this parcel is off of the county road or if they go through a shared road. Cause it's idea that, uh, a road association is gonna take care of all the problems. A lot of times, I'd say, a lot of the time, it's just dumping the problem onto the road association and trying to figure out how to deal with which costs and stuff like that. So, um, I share your concerns about the roads. And I know the road out to Edersburg is highly impacted. So I guess, um, oh, and on your agenda, it says, uh, conditional use permit for 8,200 square feet. I'm trying to figure out the numbers, then I figured out it was a typo. So, okay, that's all for now, thank you.
Robby tomorrow.
Hi, well, um, this is on the road that I live on. I don't have a particular problem with this farm, um, but I will say that it is the private road and it is certainly not 20 feet wide in many, uh, areas. And, uh, it's about six miles long, a private road, and there must be 15 to 20 grows on the road with at least three that are over an acre. And these were all permitted by the playing commission, uh, way out here. And, um, I don't have a particular problem with most people on the road. A lot of the bigger grows, the people actually don't live here, just the workers live here. I don't know about this particular gentleman at his place, but, um, my only suggestion for this project is to uh, emphasize that he needs to keep his lights covered, because, um, there is a fair amount of light pollution happening right now. And, uh, that would be good to, to make sure that's covered. But the roads are serious. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public that wishes to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a follow-up question of the previous speaker?
Yes, go ahead.
You mentioned, uh, or alluded to light pollution. Were you talking generally in the neighborhood? Or are you talking specific to this project that they're having light escape from their operations?
Uh, hello? I, I don't know if the light is coming from their place. It's very hard when, when the lights shine, um, it's very hard to tell exactly where they're coming from. It's, it's almost impossible, um, unless it's really, really bright. Most people around here, um, that I know it's from them, I can call them and tell them and they, and they cover up. But no, I'm not saying that this particular applicant has lights that are shining. I'm not saying that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, the director would like to ask a question, Robby.
Hi, Robby. W- when you mentioned that lights are a big problem right now, is that there are uncovered greenhouses at night? Like, right now, if we went out there now, there would be uncovered greenhouses?
There are, um, let's see, I would say, starting in October, there, there started to be some, some lights. There's not a lot. It's not like in February or March, it, it's less than that. But there are a couple gigantic ones out towards, um, King's Peak. Um, but it, it's, it's so hard to tell, uh, exactly if they're close or far. But, um, this isn't as strong of a time to see lights as, as in the early spring. But there's definitely some out there now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thomas, you have your hand up.
Are we done with public comment? When we're done.
Oh, okay. Um, uh, is there any other public that wishes to speak at this time? See, and then I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Thank you, Thomas, for putting that out. Forgot.
So I think, uh, the previous speaker, because I know that's a hard one for people to speak up about, because there's a lot of backlash, so I really appreciate the previous speaker. I'm concerned if the, what Bonnie brought up is the agenda states, and I'm looking at it, is stating the wrong square footage, can we hear this project tonight, even though, um, That that was my first concern, I went and looked at the.
The director's looking at it in a second.
Jordan, what's the actual square footage that's being requested?
Eighteen thousand two hundred, it looks like the agenda accidentally left off of one in front of the eight.
Right. So the thing that it does say though is that it consists of fourteen thousand five hundred sixty square feet of light depth. And three thousand four hundred and thirty six hundred and forty square feet of mixed light. So there is a typo there, but it does give the correct amount of outdoor and mixed light cultivation. I I think the commission is fine on this.
Good, thank you for that, I just wanted to provide, just double check with clarity after that comment was made, so. That was it.
Alright. Anybody else?
I could follow up on Bonnie's comment about the road association if if the commission wash wishes.
Go ahead.
There is not a road association. They did provide a road evaluation report and Public Works. Approve, conditionally approved the project. Uh, and the the main issue was meeting the paving requirements at the. The curtain where it meets the county road.
Thank you. So that's leading to my concerns with the road, I'm you know, I'm concerned with. Thankful, this one is shorter than the last one, but. This is sitting right above the Matol River. Probably the most impacted river in our area. That's arguable, but I spent my youth on that river and it is destroyed, what I'll tell you, from what it used to be. I'm looking at these pictures, this road, I didn't go out and see the property, but. There's no association on this road and that road is failing. Did you see how many pictures show it caving? And that all that dirt is going someplace. Look at the map, how close it is to the river. And a heavy rain, that isn't going to be very long before it gets there, I just can't even fathom. That we're allowing this kind of thing to happen in our county, I mean, the the Public Works Department is concerned with the first fifty feet of the road. And I'm the least area I'm concerned with is the first fifty feet of the road because. There's no problem there, it's the other point seven whatever miles of it. I can't go along with this, I I'm trying to say it as nice as I can, but this is is ridiculous what we're allowing to happen out in the hills. And I will be a no vote on this one. Any other thoughts? Anybody care to make a motion on this one? Anyone? Thomas, go ahead.
So I'm guilty. I looked at the road evaluation of just and I saw eight tenths of a mile out Dutyville, I know Dutyville is not a great road, but then. Your comments made me just look in the rest of it and it's like. I see what you're talking about, the private driveway, I think is what you're talking about, so I guess. Does staff have standards as far as what a driveway surface looks like?
From my experiments, experience, staff relies on Public Works referral response.
I'm talking about the private driveway because it's like reading that.
And the private driveway, Commissioner Mulder, typically what we're looking at is. Making sure that the road is stable enough not to produce sediment to first in surface water runoff. And that it's sufficient to accommodate the activity that's being proposed. And I'll just add, that's normally addressed in the WRPP.
Any other questions staff? I don't know what else to do, guys. Does somebody want to deny it? I mean, Thomas, go ahead.
I'm just, I just scanned through the WRPP, it looks like it does have quite a few improvement requirements, so now I'm trying to. I'm in support of it as long as I can find a condition that says it has to monitor or implement the WRPP standards.
Condition eleven. Condition eleven A through R has a list of all the detailed road improvement points.
If I see you have your hand up too, maybe while Thomas is looking at that, you can, you may have something you want to say.
Um, thank you Chair Bongio, I just thought I would. Uh, offer for the commission if it helps with the consideration, i- if you haven't seen this. There are pictures of the road, starting on page thirty six of the staff report. Uh, which were included in the road evaluation, so I think that would, you know, give the commission a good idea on what the condition of the road is currently.
That's what I was referring to, looking at those pictures scares me death. I wouldn't want to drive on it, let alone be responsible for. What happens when that slides and goes into the watershed.
Well. It does come back to the fact that. This WRPP prescribes a whole lot of specific improvements to be made. And not to the Dutyville Road, but to the roads within the property itself. You know, I just think that that this is a case where. The remedial value of going ahead and proving this project is probably greater than we would get if we simply deny it. So I'm inclined to support it.
I agree with what Noah just said, and I want to add that I think it. We need to give a consistent outcome to applicants. If they have gone through all the steps and procedures that have been provided by the county. Then they need to have some assurance that work, that there's going to be some. Reciprocation on our end that we're going to. If we say, come, come in, come out from doing illegal growing and apply for our permits and use the rules. And it appears that this applicant has done that, and so I feel uncomfortable with denying it. Without having a specific. You know, rule that finding that we can't make. So I'm in support of it.
Thomas, you have your hand up?
One other question before I'm ready to make a motion, I heard public commenters say that there's multiple other. Applications on this road and I thought standard procedure was three projects or more on a road, there's a requirement to form an RMA, is that? Um, that's that would be the only condition I would want to maybe possibly add if the commenter was correct earlier.
That actually comes out of two point O, you are correct.
Well, if I may just follow up on Commissioner Mulder's question though, is there? There's not a condition in this that they join the Road Management Association, which I would assume does exist for the Dutyville Road. Is that, is that not a condition for this applicant?
Dutyville is a public road.
Oh, okay.
This is on a private road. And as Mr. Mayor mentioned, I, at least I heard him say, is there is not a road maintenance association for this.
Got it.
You know, one of the things that will happen is if there is a two point O application on this road. It will be the obligation of the two point O applicant to. Or to initiate the road mains association and then. Two point O would require even one point O applicants to join that road mains association. So as I say that aloud, the question that arises is. Would it be appropriate in this locate, this particular circumstance to require the applicant to initiate a road maintenance association for this private road?
Even though this is under one point O, we're allowed to. Uh, based on the cumulative impacts of the other projects, add that at our discretion, correct?
If if you believe that there are circumstances that. Require some remedial efforts and a road means association being able to maintain the road would address that. Then, yeah, I think it's within your discretion to do that.
Would that be your recommendation?
Yes.
Oh, I just, I dug back through my packet of toss, the project we approved, Redwood Valley Farms, it looks like that was passed under CMM L U O. And there was a condition for them to form a RMA. So it wouldn't be, I just. For informational purposes. So I I would be in support of, I think, what Brian was saying, Commissioner Mitchell was saying earlier.
Yeah, I'm just curious about what is is are are there guidelines they have to follow when you have a road maintenance association because? You could make it very strong or very weak, and so. Are there requirements? Because like I said, I was in one, you pay a hundred fifty dollars and it takes ten years before you ever get to a point where you can do it. You don't have much money, so. Or do you have guidelines that they have to follow or requirements?
There, there are some guidelines, yes. Um, and you're right, they can be weak or they can be strong, but I the basic objective is to have people come together for the maintenance of the road.
I would add to that, if it's obvious where this is going and and I I think that's at least a start. Doing a road maintenance association, but I think that the road maintenance association needs to be. Developed and designed by the engineer who says they will be able to come up with the costs. And that's how it's done on real world projects, they make you do, Public Works makes you get an engineer. For stating what the requirements are of the road mains association, how much has to be put away a year. So that at whatever the increments are that they determine, the money is there to do the work that. Needs to be done, the problem is they won't get the money before this road slips out is what I see. The road's already failing right now, I mean, you can see in multiple pictures, the roof slipped. Um, this isn't, we're going to down or piece fencing down to fill the potholes, this is major reconstruction that needs to be done here. So.
Could I?
I think it's all the right direction. What was that?
Could I follow up on that, I'm not sure if staff is allowed to converse with.
I'll allow you to go ahead.
I'm just curious, Alan, what evidence are you using that the road is failing in multiple locations on the point eight miles of? Of the drive that act from Dutyville?
All the pictures, a whole, there must have been twenty pictures, I don't know how many, the water resource. Plan is what it's attached to and it starts on page, it's like about twenty two. And then. But the best one is the one so so far on page twenty six and twenty seven, you see the road going away on twenty six. And then the truck. In front of where the roads go and it looks like that's actually a water bar cut there, so that's a good thing. In that one location. Page thirty three is probably the the worst, there's a culvert that's given out. And taking the road. Page thirty four, there's multiple pictures of the road slipping away, I mean, it's cracked and going. Page thirty five, there's a culvert, it's all undermined, the picture above it shows cracks in the. Would be the curve of the. You want me to keep going, I mean, just put the pictures, I'm looking at what they provided, I didn't go out and look at this road. I wish I had, but I didn't.
Thank you, the Water Resources Protection Plan, thank you.
Where this is in that, you know, and then they did the the form, the self evaluation form, and of course, you got a four lane highway here, so. It's just, it's starting to to become really unnerving to be. Treated like we're that stupid, that we buy into this, so. I don't know how else to say it, and it's, this one's really starting to to grate on me and get very frustrated. As the director knows. Alright, I'll shut up. Go ahead, Noah.
Well, I just, in response to what you're saying, I mean, I. I take your point and I appreciate you highlighting the the this segment of the. Or highlighting the WRPP which shows these photos of the existing road, but you know, each of those photos are. In the WRPP is also describing pretty substantial remediation work that is called for at those locations, so I guess. I I, I mean. Don't you think, I mean, are you saying that you think that what they're planning to do to remediate this is just going to be insufficient to the problems?
I don't think that, I guess. I, one thing I would say is, in the real world, you have to do the improvements to do the project, so. If they want to pony up and do get the road to the standard before the project, I'd be a lot more willing to go along with the project. But that being said, that's not going to happen because that's not how it's set up. That road is not going to handle the kind of, this is a commercial project, remember? So it's not just somebody driving to their house, alright, there's going to be trucks breaking soil, there's going to be trucks bringing fuel, there's going to be, you know, I don't know what all they're going to have. Okay, but but the point is, that that road is already looking pretty bad to me and I'm not an engineer. I don't claim to be, but I know a lot about roads from just working on them and being in this country. And that road is already deteriorating and slipping away, so. You know, you can hire an engineer to sign off on it and. That's fine, but they got to put their name on it, I don't want to put my name on it.
You're probably looking at, you know, you could half a million to a million dollars to get the road to, you know, the condition to be in, and so just making a few improvements here and there is not. Going to cut it, there's some areas you can see where it looks like it's totally failing. And just a fail, there are grants that you, private landowners can go after, they might have to. They might have to put in a budget 25%. So there are efforts that if they collectively got together. I agree with the comments that Alan made about an engineer coming up with a plan and that they, you know, just making a road association and saying, oh, let's have a meeting and, you know, let's put in a few bucks is not going to get you to the half a million to a million dollars that you might need to fix this road up. And it might be a series of projects that you'd have to do over time. But, yeah, I ran the transportation department for the, the Yurok tribe. And so I've had to deal with a lot of projects and, you know, back when you could, you know, your road's going to fail, you might be able to get some funding from FEMA. Who knows? I don't know big fun projects anymore, but it's, it's expensive to fix roads.
The director would like to comment on something.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I, Mr. Mayor, if I'm incorrect on this, please correct me. But I think that there are two different issues that are being talked about and maybe overlapping a little bit. The WRPP and the pictures in that address the condition of the driveway on site. That, that is not part of the road that provides access to other properties. That's, that's just access to the site. That's why that's addressed in the WRPP, because those are all on-site fixes that need to be made. In the road evaluation, and this is what I think Mr. Johnson was referring to, you can see pictures of the road, and that is in a far different condition. And that's attached to the staff report. And, and whereas the WRPP is a separate attachment. So while we talk about the improvements that need to be made under the WRPP, that's, that's one set of concerns. And then there is the access road. And there are the pictures of that attached to the staff report. And formation of an RMA is different. They would not address the onsite improvements.
All right, Thomas, go ahead. Thank you, Director.
So, thank you for that clarification. That's kind of where I was leaning. I thank you again, Chair Baggio, for getting me to look at the WRPP. Because honestly, I was eight tenths of a mile, I didn't look at it. I share a lot of your concerns about the road. I'm just an uneducated high school graduate, you know? So I do happen to have a Class A contractor's license, but, you know, I'm uneducated. I, I feel that the WRPP would address those concerns that you pointed out. So I would feel comfortable to move forward with the conditions as they are and not worry about a road maintenance association. Because it's true, it's going to cost quarter of a million plus probably to fix that road to the standards that the WRPP is asking it to do or requiring it to do, not asking it. And that's, with that, I'm prepared to make a motion to adopt the resolution, find that the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the Commercial Medical Marijuana Land Use Ordinance, CMM L U O, pursuant to section 15164 of State Sequel Guidelines. Make all the required findings for the approval of the conditional use permit. Approve the Fertilla LLC project as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions. And I'll leave it there.
All right, now there's a couple free hands up. So is there somebody that would like to second that motion? Then we'll have some further discussion.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Noah. Further discussion?
I just wanted to say that I, I think that if there is already a road maintenance association being formed for that section of the road, that this project should be required to join it.
Well, I'm not going to, I agree with that as well, Brian. I'm not going to keep harping on this because I see where the votes fall. But if you look at page 45, that's probably the best picture. It's just an aerial view of where that road runs in relationship to the Matole River. And that road runs the whole, from the start to the end, right alongside the Matole River. Like, I'm going to guess that's 100 yards, maybe 150, 200, in the furthest points away. Just visualize a truck going off that road and what the capacity could be in that stream. You know? I can tell you this, if you were trying to do a different kind of project, it wouldn't be being allowed out here. Not without a lot more mitigation and dealing with those, those issues. So, but I respect that there's five of us and we have a motion and a second out there. Thomas, you get your hand back up. So go ahead.
I was just wanted clarification on Commissioner Mitchell. His language, was he stating if a road maintenance association was formed for that section of road, this applicant would be required to join that road maintenance association? Is that what I heard? And if that is what I heard, I'd be willing to adopt my motion to include that condition.
That is correct, what you heard. So I'd be willing to support your motion if you amend it thusly.
Yes, I'm willing to amend it with that language.
The second would support that amendment.
All right, any further discussion on the motion for the second? Laura, roll call votes, please.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Alan Baggio?
No.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Motion varies. Project's approved. Three, two. All right. Well. That brings us into public hearings. And let's see, the first one is.
Number two.
Number two. Saad Abdal-Maghid, special permit, Alder Point. I apologize on the name. I'm, if I got that wrong. Take a staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Great. My name is Abby Strickland and I am the assigned planner for Saad Abdal-Maghid's conditional use permit, application number 11955. The applicant, the project location is in the Alder Point area. And the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit for 10,000 square feet of cultivation. In February of 2017, the department sent the applicant an complete letter, which outlined all of the documents that were required to complete the application. No response was received from the applicant. So we did send a withdrawal notice on, in August of 2017. And at that time, the applicant responded with some of the requested information, but no further progress was made on the application into 2020. On June 3, 2020, we submitted a violation letter to the applicant for the unauthorized cultivation of 9,600 square feet of mixed light cultivation. We directed the applicant to pay $38,400, which is a penalty payment to resolve their violation or provide evidence to us that the violation did not occur. The planning department did not receive a response to the violation letter and no further progress was made on the application on behalf of the planning department, because it's a policy not to work on applications that have existing violations. On October 12, 2021, I submitted the letter to the applicant once more, letting him know that if he paid the penalty amount of $38,400, we could continue to work on his application if he submitted all the requested documentation. Alternatively, it was noted that he could withdraw the application and remove all the cultivation and infrastructure. But we did not receive a response. And I made multiple attempts to reach the applicant by phone and email. On October 20th, oh, and I should just note that on October 12th, I let him know that we would be taking the project forward for denial to the November 4 hearing if we did not receive a response. So on October 20th, I, once again, or I received an email from the applicant, from the same email that I had tried to reach the applicant on previously. He's, they stated that they had attempted to reach us multiple times, although we have no record of these attempts. And I responded and asked him to promptly contact me because his project was being taken forward and he did have the opportunity to withdraw the application. And save us all the time of a hearing. No response was received. On October 26th, I reached out again, asked him to please contact me because the project, the hearing date was coming and we received no response. So staff is recommending that the commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines, section 15270, and make the finding that the project cites in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and deny the Saad Abdal-Maghid project. And I'm available for questions.
Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Thomas.
I may be out of line asking this question, so tell me to be quiet if I am. Being as this is the second project to come forward that kind of just seems like a pattern of non-responsive. How much staff time is wasted on projects such as this? And if I'm out of line, just don't even answer me, tell me to be quiet.
So we do offer the applicant the ability to withdraw the application to prevent someone like myself from billing additional time to their project and working on this presentation and a staff report for denial. But when we don't receive a response and we have an existing violation, it's, it's standard practice to deny the application. So I would, if you wanted an honest estimate, have probably spent approximately eight hours putting together the staff report, revising the staff report, creating a presentation and spending my time here tonight to present it to you all.
Thomas, I have a question. So I promised the first part of my question. So now, we're going to, I'm assuming that we're going to deny that. And what's going to happen? I mean, obviously, this, this is a person that doesn't play in good faith. They don't, it doesn't appear that they're trying to come in compliance. They're just ignoring and, and going. So we're, we're counting open here.
So there, there's a couple different, different things that will happen from here. You know, item number one is that they are still responsible for the staff time. And so if there is a outstanding balance, they will be contacted about that and/or that will go to collections. Secondly, the site will now be in violation. And so that will be referred over to code enforcement. And code enforcement will then be in a position to contact them probably with a notice of violation and a notice to evade. If they choose not to do that, it will begin to accrue fines and penalties.
Any other questions for staff? Thomas, is your hand backed up or just let go?
Follow-up question. Could this project be reapplied by a new owner?
Abby, assistance since a watershed.
Oh, I am going to look into that right now.
It is not in an impacted watershed and its owner is FR. So theoretically, they could apply under ordinance 240. Sorry, I'm anticipating that question.
Thank you. It's, it's not in the ordinances, but that when we talk on the 18th, that might be something to look at because there's a lot of these projects that just, they change ownership, but they don't really change ownership, if you know what I'm saying? So food thought.
Write it down so you remember to bring that one up. Okay. Anybody else before we open this up to public comment? All right, open this up to public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this project? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Peggy, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines, section 1527, or make the findings that the project cited in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and deny the Had Abdamigid project.
I'll second that motion.
Brian's second. Any further discussion? And then take a roll call vote, Laura.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Alan Baggio?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
There, Thomas?
I didn't hear my name called, yes.
Okay, thank you. Carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. All right, that brings us on to, looks like item number five, Emerald Triangle Medical Incorporated, conditional use permit and special permit in the Edersburg area. Staff report, please.
Thank you again, Commissioners. I'm assigned this project, Emerald Triangle Medicinal. It is located, also located in the Edersburg-Whitethorn area where my previous project was. This project is for 13,000 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation and 660 square feet of mixed light with the appurtenant nursery limited to 10%. Water usage is 118,000 gallons per year. And the source of water is a point of diversion from North Fork Bear Creek. There's a second diversion that supplies domestic water. Water storage on site is 118,000 gallons and they, which matches their water usage. And they are planning on adding an additional 42,000 gallons to bring it up to 160,000 gallons. They do propose some site development, a two-story processing and manufacturing building with a combined floor space of 1,800 square feet and a septic system and the 10 additional water tanks to bring up their water storage. And they are planning to apply four solar panels to improve their solar system and a propane tank. I just wanted to point out the point of diversion is registered. They have a water right and a final lake and stream bed alteration agreement that requires full forbearance during the summer months. I wanted to point out some issues with this project that the planning commission would find of interest. Electricity and two special permits are also required. So power is currently provided by a propane and electric generators and two solar panels. As I mentioned on the previous slide, there are, they plan to add four additional solar panels to allow more limited generator use. But the applicant, in the near term, cannot commit to converting to exclusively solar or PG&E within a short timeframe. They would like it conditioned on market recovery and/or federal legalization, but that it would in no case be longer than 10 years from project approval, that they would transition fully to sustainable alternative energy sources. The issue of special permits, they have, they would require two. One is for streamside management alter rate, or a setback reduction to maintain their point of diversion in the, in the streamside management area. And the other one is to reduce the 600-foot setback from public lands to 420 feet. And that is to the King Range National Conservation Area. And some selected conditions of approval to mention. We've detailed all of the recommendations in the Water Resources Protection Plan. And that includes retirement relocation and restoration of a historic cultivation area that's in an SMA and on a landslide. And that includes, there is an included in condition to prepare a restoration monitoring plan, annually documenting the results of that retirement relocation and the revegetation of that area. And as I mentioned, that the applicant is conditioned to begin the process of converting. to begin the process of converting away from generator use through additional solar panels and PG&E power if available. In no case longer than 10 years.
I have a question. Do you know what percent of the total power is supplied by the two existing generators or conversely, how much power will be provided by the total of four generator or, excuse me, the four solar panels that will be in existence that are being proposed? What percentage of the total power is that source versus PG&E?
Allow me a moment to review. I did request the applicant's agent if they could agree to full conversion to alternative energy sources, and I'm just reviewing their response. They have received quotes from Greenwire to make the upgrades to handle the project's complete needs. They anticipate it could be, it could be afforded within a few years, but given the market, current market conditions, that could be proved infeasible. They do not, did not provide a relative energy requirement detailing, you know, the sources. There are satellite solar panels that run the water, water pumps and fans. But there is not a detailed energy plan. But I would remind you, there's only six hundred and sixty square feet of mixed light and then a one thousand three hundred square feet of appertinent nursery that would be using the electricity apart from perhaps dehumidifiers, et cetera. The agent is on the, in the attendees list as well.
Peggy, you have a question?
What does conditioned on market recovery and federal legislation mean?
That, that means if the, their profit margin is high enough, they would convert within two or three years. But it's not a concrete performance criteria benchmark.
They said within 10 years, if the market recovery and federal, and how does federal legislation factor into anything for market recovery? I just think that they're just throwing out, sounds good, but we're not really planning on doing it. And I'm just really not interested in saying something like that because I can tell you that PG&E is never affordable. You never can probably afford it in your profit margin. I had to go out and get grants and it costs, you know, thirty million dollars plus to do the power line projects that I did and they're not cheap. They were like a million dollars a mile. So you're never making enough money for that. So you, you need to look at maybe multiple types of renewable energy and some of hydro is not that expensive. You might have to have multiple sources of renewable just to, you know, get by. There are grants available to private landowners. You know, renewable energy for their, their wells or their pumps and what have you that's available through the state, but you, you know, to just to say, well, throw out a few words that, that mean you'll never attain it is not gonna cut it with me.
Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
Inappropriate for me to respond to market, the questions about market conditions to Commissioner O'Neill.
I don't believe so. Go ahead.
So I mean, market conditions, the market's down sixty plus percent from a year ago. There's multiple farmers that have been, distributors held on the product from 2020 saying it was sold and then it wasn't sold. And there's basically people with product that it's cheaper to throw it on the compost pile than sell it because cultivation taxes from 2020 and federal legalization that's going to open up the market availability for legal sales. So that will increase prices that's projected to increase prices. But it really is, the market sucks. So straight up.
Well, and I, you know, I can fully sympathize with that. I, and I don't think we're asking a whole lot. When someone says come up with an energy plan in five years, that's not a whole lot to ask for. And that, that energy plan doesn't have to be full solarization because I know that's really expensive. That's why I'm suggesting that there's alternatives to that. But to just say, you know, if we can't afford it, we're not going to do it. And some of these people have been growing for a long time in the markets that were very good and they didn't, didn't, you know, use that money to go to I, I don't think we're asking a lot. We don't have a written standard or code that they have to follow. We just say come up with a renewable plan within five years. And I think that that's a good thing. Maybe it's not required, but I think it's a good thing that, that we're asking that. And, you know, it's, it's always been my feeling. I mean, if, if we're saying the market sucks, why are we continuing to add more farms in an area that is oversaturated? And it just will make all, everyone fail.
I have a brief response, Chair.
Yeah, but last time though, we're not going to keep going back and forth with discussion. This is time to ask questions of staff. Go ahead, Thomas.
Would, I, I'm not going to go back and forth with her. Would it be appropriate to have an energy plan within five years and then in years five to 10, implement that energy plan? Would that be something realistic?
We did that kind of thing on previous projects, so I don't see why we couldn't. All right. Any other questions for staff? I have one. Guess what? Regarding the road evaluation form, I see that said in the requirements that an engineer was to do one. I couldn't find it. And then I think what he, they're referring to is one of the, the forms that on page one fifteen, the engineer Alan filled out. But they've got every, there's all kinds of red ink on this thing saying this is missing. They've got the, the road is the wrong road. And I mean, I don't know. Are we supposed to improve something based on all this? It doesn't appear to me that an engineer could get it right.
Sorry, I'm looking at it.
So one fifteen on
Yeah.
sixteen.
So it it appears what Mr. Beard has done is to identify that the road is adequate. The red lines that you see there seem to explain that he has identified that the road is developed to the equivalent of a category four standard and then did the analysis in part B.
Says he checked the wrong box.
Yeah.
And which is it?
And it says he's supposed on, in the conditions of approval, it said a road evaluation report for windy ridge lanes was prepared by AM Baird engineers. Unless I'm, I didn't see it in here. There is an attachment three and I missed it, but I've looked for it multiple times now. All I see that Alan Beard did was fill out the self-evaluation form. Well, honestly, it's probably a moot point because it won't make any difference in things, but I mean, it just seems like he isn't even completed. Even the self-evaluation form couldn't be completed correctly.
If I could, if I could, you're looking at the Public Works referral response with the red, red marking says missing.
Yeah.
The road evaluation report itself has that filled in. I think that was the Public Works referral response that the engineer then had a chance to correct. It may not be the correct one in the staff report, but what I'm looking at right here has that ADT filled in as less than 100. Date measured four seventeen, 2019. So one month after the Public Works referral response.
So when Alan Beard signed it, it was four eighteen nineteen.
Yes, I could just, I could share the document if you'd like.
It doesn't matter. It just, it seems like
They updated it on six thirteen with a correction.
Jordan, would you please just show that, walk through it?
So here is the, the version I believe you're looking at with the circle, if you know the circle ADT.
That's the second page of it. Yeah.
And it's signed April 2019 down here.
Yep.
So the road evaluation report I have, it has that filled in. That ADT that was missing.
Uh huh.
And it's dated a couple of months later.
Okay. We didn't have that in our packet.
Yeah, I started to interrupt, Chair Bongio. It took, it took me a while to figure this out as well, but the road evaluation is actually in two different sections. And so if you go to page eighty nine of your staff report, that is the filled in road evaluation that Jordan was just sharing. And the other one is, as he mentioned, part of the Public Works response.
I missed it in that first section, but I found it in the other section. Thank you for putting that out there. All right, any other questions before I open up for public comment? All right. Is there any public that wishes to speak on this project? First, it is R. Downey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I am the applicant that is being discussed. And I just wanted to touch base on the solar situation that was brought up. And originally I was approached by the planning department with a three-year deadline to come up with the improvements. And the market value thing that I discussed was based on the fact that we're struggling just to, to stay in business right now. I do want to point out that, you know, I've made an effort to get the estimates for the solar improvements with the intention of converting to alternative energy because I, you know, it's something I want to do. I just didn't want to obligate myself to something that I didn't feel like I could come through with. We have just been notified that there is a program called Project Trellis that we just found out like a week ago. And we are going to try to put in for some application in that program to improve the solar and the water tank storage to address those situations. But until we actually do that, I don't know how they're going to turn out. I just didn't want the pressure of being in non-compliance if I couldn't do it in the three years. So it was, it was with the best intention. And I also wanted to thank all you for your time and for these, for this opportunity.
As a follow-up, do you know how much as a percentage of your total energy usage, the solar panels provide now or are going to provide once you've added the new ones?
Well, I don't know the exact details on that, but I, I will say that our power usage is only for raising the plants up to maturity to install into the outdoor grows and the depths. And we do have a, a small nursery that we produce clones in for our, our second run. But it's not like a long-term situation. It's, it starts up. We start up usually like middle of April and run for like three to four weeks to get our plants up to maturity to install into our depths. And then we cut clones and root those for our second run. So it's about a three and a half month period where we actually use power. And we run T5 lights in the, in the roof of our mixed light greenhouses, which is a very minimal power, power draw. And we have T5 lights in our nursery as well. It's not a, it's not a high demand power situation of, of any sort. We're just trying to, you know, come into compliance and do the alternative energy thing. We, we have the possibility of possibly adding PG&E, but it kind of would depend on the neighbors coming together. I did hear one of the commissioners' response to that about the cost and we, we are aware of that. Alternative energy is our first choice and we're kind of hoping that the grant will provide us with that opportunity. But like I said, we just found out about that. So I apologize for any questions that come up that seem ridiculous, but we have the best intentions.
Right. Thank you. Public seven, one, zero, eight.
Hi. I had some questions or comments about the energy use because it's like using generators to run mixed light and your propagation area. And then something that's not considered a lot is the processing. So it seems like that's not considered when like cultivation and, and some people do the processing onsite and others than that off somewhere. And I would think that if you didn't have renewable energy, that you wouldn't be using more generators to power your processing activity. And the whole situation with the roads is always an issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other public that wishes to speak? Nathan Hasden.
Thank you, Commissioner Bongio, for the opportunity to speak on this project. My name is Nathan Madsen. I'm attorney for Rain and Zip. We represent Emerald Triangle Medicinal. And I just want to thank the commission for the opportunity to speak and the staff for all of your hard work processing this permit to this point. Very good questions. I appreciate the engagement from the commission and staff's excellent work answering it. Thank you, Cliff, for pointing out the road eval on page eighty nine ninety. That was great. There were a couple of errors in the staff report and I want to just say thank you so much to Jordan. He did a great job. He's been great to work with and it's a lot to track. So this isn't coming down on Jordan. I'm just, I want to point out a couple of things. Jordan mentioned water use at one hundred and eighteen thousand. Jordan mentioned water use at 118,000 gallons that matched the storage actual use. As you'll find, the staff report is 100,000 gallons. So, we are actually at a position where forbearance can and is practiced. And the additional water storage is to accommodate, you know, emergencies or, you know, bear bites the water line, things happen. Hopefully, nothing like that would ever happen, but if it did, there would be additional water onsite to support the project. The goal with the power, I think that your questions are valid and important to address. I want to thank Commissioner O'Neill for the suggestion of hydro. That will require a modification to the LSAA, but I think it's a good suggestion, and I think it actually is one that might be good to add to the proposal. The existing solar system estimate from Greenwired Energy will supply sufficient power to support the entire project. And I think you heard from Ron that this really is about Ron being committed to being able to fulfill his word. It's not a situation where he's just throwing stuff out there. He's like, hey, look, I, I want to be able to be true to my commitments. And I think that's important to factor into this consideration. But Greenwired has been onsite. There is an estimate that I shared with Jordan, and the cost is significant. I'm, I don't know that I'm at liberty to share that in the public forum right now, but, you know, Ron is committed to that, and he'll, he'll follow through as soon as he can. And his concern about the 10 years, I know it sounds wishy-washy, but the reality is he just wants to make sure he can fulfill his commitments. The existing solar system, it, it sounded like it was a little smaller than I think it actually is. I do believe it, it does supply significant amounts of power for the other items, not the lights and the drying equipment. It's, takes care of the solar and the fans, and then there's a little bit for the backup. And I just wanted to link a couple of details together for Bonnie and Ron, where, you know, Ron mentioned the types of lights he uses, which are low wattage lights, and Bonnie was concerned about that in relation to the power use. And I just wanted to put two and two together on that and point out that the renewable energy, once installed, will support the, the complete project's needs. And if there's any additional questions, I'm available. Thank you so much for the time.
All right.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If you've had an evaluation of how much it will cost or whatever to power the entire project, can you use that to estimate how much the two new solar panels go towards that entirety of the need? It seems like if you've evaluated going to 100%, you could tell us what percent this two that you're committing to represents?
A very good question, Commissioner Mitchell. Thank you so much. I think you're probably right, but I am not a solar expert. I am not an alternative energy expert. I saw the estimate from Greenwired, and I couldn't tell you much about what it meant. The parts list was extensive. It had upwards of 50 itemized items. I was honestly, had a hard time picking out which item was the panels themselves. So, I am not qualified to address your, your question is the realistic answer. But I can tell you that, you know, Greenwired is a local competent company, and I trust if they are the ones designing the system, which is what we have as a system design estimate, that they have taken the necessary steps to ensure that the, you know, the appropriate amount of power to supply the project is included in the estimate. Apologies for not having a direct answer for your question.
Any other questions for Nathan while he's here?
The, the chair's frozen up right now. He's working on getting that back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My video. I'm so sorry. I don't know. It just all disappeared, and I didn't touch anything, so I apologize. So, where were we? Was there, Thomas, you had your hand up. That's what I was asking.
I didn't hear you. My comment, I just have general comments when we're done with public comment part.
Okay, so, let me get back to the public. I don't think there was. Okay. Yeah. So, Nathan, did you have anything else you wanted to add? I think you said you were done, but.
Yeah, no, I am complete unless anybody has any other additional questions. I'm happy to answer.
All right, thank you. So, with that, I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the panel. So, now, Thomas, go ahead.
So, I apologize I'm being talkative, but I continue to hear comments that I think it'd be good to just help inform the commission of things that are challenging for those in the cannabis industry. I've heard complaints of energy use when it comes to processing onsite. The difficulties of sending your product offsite processing, I can speak from my own firsthand knowledge as well as many other cultivators I've dealt with. Quality control is not the same as doing it on the farm. Your costs are astronomically higher than your costs on farm, unfortunately. A lot of times, the yield is not the same as when you're able to produce it on the farm as far as, and unfortunately, when the quality control's down, the cost of your sales are down significantly. I could show you data to prove that privately, obviously not in a public meeting, but. And then another thing about nursery farms, a lot of nursery or a lot of farms are alive because they have their own in-house genetics that they've cultivated and bred for generations and generations, some of these strains. Some of them have just been created over the last decade. And those unique genetics are the reason some of these farms are able to stay afloat and stay in business. So, I think if our intent is to promote the cannabis industry and have it a successful economic driver of our community, we really need to think about those things when we're talking about projects. That's it.
Thank you, Thomas. Any other thoughts from the commission? All right. Where do we want to go with this one, guys? We've got one more project after this, so let's keep rolling. It's 9:09.
I think we should just be consistent and, you know, you know, they tried to explain why they put that in there, and I understand that you don't want to commit to something you don't think you can do. But people make choices, and, you know, you, this is an industry that needs to be responsible. Regardless, you know, everyone faces challenges, and I think that we should include language that's similar to what we have included in other permits, and that, and that was that they come up with a plan. And, you know, I think Mr. Ford can probably spew out what we've said before. You told me the percentage that they have to have and all that, and, and, you know, you work towards that. And if you can't make that goal, then I'm sure the staff will come back and say that it was unreasonable to expect somebody to do something in five years. But I don't think that using the, oh, we're not making any money argument is really going to cut it because, you know, if you're not making any money, you wouldn't be going into a business. You wouldn't putting, be putting out all of this money to get a permit to do something. So, I just think that we should need to be consistent and treat everybody fairly and equally.
Well, you want to make a motion to that effect?
I may, I would like to make a motion that we approve the permit and put in the language, and maybe, you know, Mr. Ford can come up with what that language has been in the past. I can't spew it off the top of my head, but.
I was just looking for the condition. Perhaps Mr. Mayor knows which condition it is. But as I recall, what he showed is that it really only requires changing the 10-year time horizon to the five-year time horizon or to the, into 2025 is the common language that we use, December of 2025.
We haven't asked anyone to be fully renewable. I mean, there was a percentage that, that you had brought up was the standard that you had been asking for. It wasn't 100%. And I can tell you, I, we're doing a solar project right now. It's $550,000. So, I know how expensive it is, and no one's saying that you need to spend a half a million dollars on your farm, just that you're working in that direction. It sounds like after listening to the, the applicant that, you know, they're behind that, the language that they put in there kind of made it sound, you know, like I can read and see that that meant nothing, you know. So, I think that they do have better intentions than the way it came across in, in the language and the application. So, we think that we just be consistent and say that your five-years window, like we've said before, and whatever that percentage is of renewables, and I don't think we should limit it to solar. I don't know if there's some, you know, requirement that it has to be solar because it's not always reliable either, and it's very expensive.
If I could, Commissioner O'Neill, I think the primary objective has been is just to cease the generator use within that five-year period. And, and I think that's what the condition would do just by changing out the, the reference to 10 years to either five years or December of 2025.
Let's add that, and I'm happy.
And that would be condition 16.
So, that was a motion, then Peggy? Thomas, your hand is up.
I gotta wait till there's a second to have any discussion, don't I, or can I state my comments now?
I'll be the second.
Okay, Brian's seconding it.
So, we're consistently inconsistent because we've approved projects since I've been on this commission with no generator clause and with generator clause. I, I personally felt the applicant made a good statement, and maybe it was good to have a five-year energy plan in five years and then condition the generator out in 10 years. People have spent their life savings pursuing this business because they weren't, it's, I mean, I could go on for 20 hours, but I'm not going to do that to you. People have spent their life savings pursuing licensed legitimate business activities, and I think it'd be appropriate for us to understand that.
I think we've been pretty consistent. It's just been recently that all of a sudden we stopped being consistent. For the couple of years I've been on here, we've been pretty consistent, saying that we want them to phase out the generators, but not 100%. We understand that. And it's just been recently that we've just kind of been giving some people a break and other people not a break. And I would just rather see us be consistent because I don't think that's fair to that, to the people that we've required to comply with our recommendations.
Commissioner O'Neill, would you be comfortable? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Thomas.
There was 85 KW generator with no restrictions approved since I've been on the commission. Before I joined the commission, I've seen multiple projects with 125 KW plus generators approved. So, there's zero consistency. No policy has been changed. No ordinance has been changed. That's where I'll leave it.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, I wanted, I just wanted to clarify on the motion. You, you had used the date or five years, and you said some percent. And I wanted to suggest or offer the suggestion that perhaps we should say that they come up with a power budget that is 80% renewable within five years from now. So.
I accept that.
Okay. And I think that's a little bit more lenient than we've been with, with others, but I think they've shown a good faith effort by committing to putting in some solar panels immediately. So, I think that's a fair trade-off.
Commissioner Mitchell's compromise.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on it?
Can I clarify the amended condition? Is that the energy plan be prepared within five years?
No, that within, in, within five years, 80% of the total energy of the project will be provided by renewable sources.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? CNN Laura, I ask for a roll call vote.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. So, I see things right. That was our last one tonight. Is there, in, before we adjourn, is there any thing that we want to discuss? Anything you want to bring up, Director?
Just bring up two things, since we've got a few precious moments. Item number one is that we are scheduling the discussion with the commission on November 18th. We were planning on not having any items on that, but given all the continuances, rather than further stacking up the meeting of the second, we suggested that those be heard on, on the 18th, so that will put a little more pressure on that night. The second thing that you heard, the most recent applicant. The second thing that you heard the most recent applicant talk about grant money that's going to be available for water storage and also for solar conversion. And that is something that's coming out of the state. They're, they granted, they're proposing to grant over eighteen million dollars to Humboldt County. And what we're proposing is that this money be used, twelve million of it be used to allow grants for water storage. And that could be tanks and it also could be development ponds. We're also proposing, I think, the three million dollars to be used for conversion generators to other sources of power. And then we're also proposing that three million dollars be used to continue the study of hydrogeology in Humboldt County to develop a better standards for determining the appropriateness of wells. And so we are submitting that grant application this next week and look forward to receiving that grant. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the director?
Yeah, how about the road improvement has been, efforts to see how you might be able to have funding for road improvement? Because I know it's, you know, these rural roads I dealt, have dealt with quite a bit and they are in bad condition. And the county doesn't have the resources to keep up even the county roads, let alone any other roads.
So in light of the concerns with the water usage, we really, and, and given the fact that the grant money is really for permitting and or sequel compliance, we focused upon a water because that seems to be the larger concern. We are, we would love to be able to have money to address roads. But in all reality, twelve million dollars, if everybody used the maximum amount of money that's available, which is per applicant, which is forty thousand dollars, that's only three hundred and seventy-five applicants.
And it, it might be just limited to a plan, you know, that you fund a plan on, you know, how do you prioritize what roads need improvement? Those that could impact your watersheds, what kinds of resources are available? Because there are resources out there, you know, I mean, I've worked on that for thirty years, getting road money and, and it was successful, but it, it's going to take an effort, a concerted effort. But if we just all sit around saying the roads are bad and no one can do anything about it. But we had cooperative agreements with the, with the public works where we, they got funded for public work so that they could work on, you know, in Old Hills Road and and that road work. So I, I think maybe just a plan or a prioritization of what, how are we going to move forward?
We, we, we did put a very small amount of money in there for roads. And what our hope is, is that if there's extra money available, that we access that by having a proposal that's ready to go. But, and, and part of that comes out of the settlement agreement that we have with Friends of the Eel River, where we are currently providing funds, but it's really only a couple of million dollars that's available right now to address sedimentation in critical watersheds.
So what, what I'm getting at is if you have a really strong plan with priorities, then you're, you're in a position to go after that funding. If it's watershed, you know, protection or restoration, you're in a good position to do that because you have that plan and, and you don't have a plan. You know, and you're just keep having problems and discussing them. But when you zero in on something, it puts you in a good position to strike at funding that could be already there. There's, there's lots of different ways you can fix the roads up with different types of federal and state funding. But having that plan and those priorities, like what's the most critical areas to, because I, I understand that these private landowners are not going to be able to pay the millions and millions of dollars it's going to take to fix those roads up. But if it's tied to a watershed that you're restoring or there are some private, there are private grants available through the federal government to fix roads up. You do have to put them back. And I don't know, because the federal government doesn't approve cannabis, if they'll call them farms and give you farms, but the state might. So that's what I'm getting at. If you just set aside some money and I don't, you'd have to talk to, you know, an engineering firm about what that would cost to come up with some priorities. And maybe you can't do it throughout the whole county. You just zero in on a certain area first.
Thanks for the question.
Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
There's supposed to be four minds, so shouldn't you go first?
That's okay. I was going to bring up, it's brought up a couple times and it's something that I saw a little last week. I had the opportunity to go out and see some of our countryside here in the county. And it was early in the morning and I noticed several from my vantage point of where I was high up on a mountain, several grows that were emitting light. And this was at, right at dawn. And I couldn't even figure out what it was at first. And then it hit me what it was and, but, you know, if I saw three locations, how many more are out there? And my, really what my question is, is who's policing that? Or is anybody policing it?
We, we, we try to every once in a while, we send people out at night to identify light pollution. We do absolutely respond to complaints when people give us sites. We do contact them and, and we keep those names confidential when, when people do report.
Hey, Thomas, you're up.
So unfortunately, that's off topic, but yes, it's that time of year where that's happening again. And that's really unfortunate in that stealing water out of creeks is number one. And then like not covering your tarps is number two on my environmental. That's just my own internal thing. What I was going to ask about the grant program, I've been asked by multiple people. I got kicked off the call the other day, probably service. What about those people that have many applicants or have already put in significant infrastructure and would like to add more? Would their infrastructure they've already put in be able to be counted towards that matching money?
I don't think so. We've admitted to really look at that. But the money is really intended to move people from the provisional licensing status to the annual licensing status and for sequel compliance. And so those are the paradigms that we have to work within. We will try to make it available to everybody that we can. And if they're doing it to mitigate environmental concerns, if they're, you know, stopping use of, of connected wells or points of diversion and through rainwater or something like that. Yeah, we'll absolutely want to justify that.
Okay, because it's, it's just been, a couple of comments have been made to me because it's long and short is the people that did things right, they're stuck holding the bill. But if you drug your feet long enough, then the government's going to throw in some money and get you across the line. So that's just feedback that's been given to me.
I, I completely hear that and I, yeah, I completely understand.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're at nine thirty. So I would encourage you to write down your thoughts for the eighteen. Come up with questions, things that we can talk about and then maybe forward on to the supervisors in hopes that maybe we can get some things so we don't keep coming up against these same issues over and over and over. Anything else? One, twice, we're adjourned.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.